All right, I'll call to order the Town and Mount Desert Planning Board meeting for November 18th, 2025. Is our camera on? Can we change the view around to? Make sure we can.
Speaker.
Oh, boy. Can you?
Is that how you want it?
Yeah, maybe. Are we there? Can everybody see us? Let's make sure.
You can see and hear you.
Right. It's just a little tough when you can't see yourself. All right, well, hopefully, we're all sitting up straight, and here we go. So I'll welcome everybody aboard. If you are online, please sign into chat. It just helps with the Recording Secretary getting everybody attended for. You know, we've got, so we've got people online, we've got people here in the audience, and I thought I'd just start with some procedural stuff first. And, you know, I think one of the very first things we need to do is, well, let's make introductions first. How about that? So I'm William Hanley, I'm chairman. We've got Tracy Loftus Keller as vice chair. We've got Ann Dalton here. We've got our alternative member, Daniel Burke, as well. Our other alternative member, welcome back, Meredith. We've got Alan Kimerly, and we've got town council Andy Hamilton, and I think other regular members, Gail Marshall is not with us tonight. But I think the first item we need to take care of is to vote Meredith on as a voting member tonight.
Like to make a motion to make Meredith have a voting member today?
Second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard, Meredith. So, so just to clarify, the voting members tonight are Alan, Meredith, myself, Tracy, and Ann. And then I want to say a huge thank you to Ann, Dan, and Alan, where they've, you know, they agreed to come onboard, familiarize themselves with this whole application, which I'm sure was plenty of bedtime reading. And so, thank you for that. And so we have a full board voting tonight, and an alternate if we need it. And then just I'll get into reading the agenda and kind of why we're here tonight. But is there anything other procedurally, Mr. Hamilton, you think at this point I should touch upon?
Perhaps just for my clarity, Mr. Burke serves as an alternate. You've got a five-member board?
We have a five-member board, two alternate.
Okay.
And I want to say that is the first in 10 years, over 10 years on the board, that we have a completely full board. So any of you out there who have aspirations or are itching to be on the planning board, I guess you're gonna have to wait.
So if for any reason we lose a member between the start of this proceeding and the end of this proceeding, which is hopefully tonight, we may need Mr. Burke as an alternate. But until then, he's allowed to participate, but he's not a voting member. Okay, good. I just wanted to put it.
And, and all of you guys have signed affidavits that you've read all the material and you're caught up.
For the benefit of counsel to the parties, Mr. Burns and Mr. Plegi, Ms. Keane has in her possession the signed affidavits. If you need to see those or you want to review those, those are available to you.
All right. All right, well, let's soldier on here and bear with me as I read through the agenda. Right. Call to order. So item two tonight, we have review of the MD 365 heelway subdivision on court-ordered remand in Cannon et al's versus Town and Mount Desert, and address the court-specific request that the planning board address the open space requirement for the subdivision and address calculations of open space requirements after hearing brief presentations by the council for the parties focused on a summary of evidence in the record. And let me first ask is, as far as a butter's being notified and this one being advertised in the blue folder, and I'm gonna pass that to Tracy, the blue one.
You have to ask basically that.
Right, and then I'll I'll ask as Tracy's looking for that, if there's any conflict of interest on the board.
I'm here.
Okay.
Not hearing any.
You should also ask counsel for the parties if they're aware of any conflict, and if they want to address that issue.
Are the counsel for the parties aware of any conflict and need to address any issue?
And for the applicant, I'm not aware of any, and I don't need to address.
Mr. Burns?
Grady Burns for Butters, and Cannon, Mark Cannon, Moza Cannon Guzy, Lamont Harris, Stuart Janney, Joseph Frierson, and Lynn Wheat, collectively via Butters, who are parties to the appeal. No objection regarding the membership.
Thank you. So Tracy?
The Mount Desert Islander, and shows a public notice on November 6th. And letter to Butters dated October 27th, 2025, and there's a whole slew of Butters that were notified. So, three pages worth. That's a whole lot of people.
It should be two notices based on that.
Here, and one, two, two separate newspaper ones.
So which newspapers?
It just says Mount Desert Islander on this piece of paper.
Was they ever noticed? What would they have noticed? Said there were two?
Here, here it is. Sorry, October 30th, 2025.
Aye.
Could we just for the record, ask the code officer, for purposes and method and notification, by distance or measurement, which Butters did you notify?
I notified the Butters within a thousand-foot radius.
And you got them all?
Yes.
Good. Offer to the counsel for the parties, if anybody has any questions
That's why there's so many in there.
Or concern as to notification.
Andy, I'll, I guess, give you the table, and if you'd like to kick things off with just kind of a summary of where we're at, and what we're looking at tonight.
Sure. Attorney Burns, I've provided to attorney Plegi, so I'm going to represent to you what I've provided to the board, just as very summary materials to just frame tonight's meeting. Tab one in an index is a list of prior meetings and submissions. It provides essentially for the meeting list of March 8th through the 13th of 2023. I won't cause you to recall every one of those meetings, Attorney Burns. Tab two is the decision of the planning board, but I've only included in the board's packet the cover page and pages 26, page 27, page 28. I'm not sure how much, as well as page 34, I'm not sure how much utility you'll find your prior decision to be, because on open space, the court disagreed with the board as to its interpretation, that there was no open space requirement. And as the chair identified, the narrow issue for you tonight is to apply the open space requirement and to do the calculations under section 5.16. Tab three is four pages of the law court opinion, starting with section E of its opinion, open space requirements, and running four pages. You'll, you'll see at the bottom of page 18, it's so numbered, paragraph 29 of the law court's decision, hence we must remand for the planning board to make the calculation, which may very well result in a finding that no open spaces requirement. Entry is judgment vacated, remanded to the business and consumer docket with instructions to vacate the planning board's decision, and remand the matter to the planning board for further consideration consistent with this opinion. If anybody needs the pages of the law court opinion, and just those pages that relate to open space, you have those. Finally, tab four, before we get to the submittals of the parties, includes section 5.10, which has not been cited by either the law court and its remand, nor by the parties in their submittals, as well as 5.16.2. Tab five is attorney Plegi's submittal. Tab six is the 10-page heelway subdivision application summary. There are a couple of pages of that summary, including page nine, that deal with the open space submittal of the applicant. Tab seven is a landscaping plan. But more importantly, tab eight is attorney Burns, November 10, 2025 submission. As I earlier suggested to the board, I would suggest that you focus on page three of attorney Burns' letter. I believe it's page three of attorney Plegi's letter. That's not to exclude all the other important pages of their letter, but when they really focus, they each focus on page three of their submittals. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
So, so just to give kind of a high-altitude summary of why we're here tonight, the directive about the remand is the, the court essentially said that that cluster subdivisions of workforce subdivisions are not mutually except exclusive of each other. They're essentially in the same family, and therefore, the, the open space requirement is required. So we've got some math to do tonight, but we're gonna hear from, from the parties here tonight first. We will discuss if we're taking public comment on, on this tonight, and if we do, it would have to be extremely focused, public comment on this very specific matter that's being remanded to us. And with that, I turn it over to Mr. Plegi.
Let me just ask the parties, just before attorney Plegi starts, I assume attorney Burns, that it's your view that the applicant has the burden, and so should go first, and then you'll be responsive? Is that correct?
Correct, and certainly if the applicant has any final comments, because they do bear the burden, we would not object to that as well.
Okay. And then the second question I have for both counsel is, do either of you want rebuttal or serve rebuttal? I don't see the need for it, but I just wanted to check in with you.
You're asking me in advance if I want to reply?
You can, you can, you can reserve. That's fine. I just wanted to know what your view was going.
I don't play the talk very much tonight, and I would hope that I'm left anything else to say, but I just preserve a brief few moments if I could, if necessary.
Attorney Burns?
Sure, no, no, no objection to attorney Plegi having an opportunity to respond to anything that, that I have to say, certainly. As you know, his client, the applicant, bears the burden here, so an opportunity to respond, I think, would be appropriate.
Okay, we'll deal with serve rebuttal if it arises, but there won't be anything beyond serve rebuttal. We'll leave it there. Thank you, Mr. Hanley. I think it's time to start us off.
I'm gonna hand it off to Mr. Plegi then.
Thank you. Was the board of preference if I stand or sit? I don't want to hover over you, but I also don't want to be disrespectful.
You're fine with me.
Yeah, just project.
I will project, I promise. So just as a reminder, and for the new people, thank you very much for reviewing all of this stuff. I, we all appreciate your diligence in doing that. Welcome back. Thank you for joining the board again. This is a six-unit, single-lot workforce subdivision. Following your extraordinarily lengthy decision, I think it was 41 pages approving the application, law court sent back to you to show your work on subdivision ordinance section 5, 16, 2, 3. You might recall you already imposed some open space requirements on us under section 5.10. In doing so, I would submit to you that the law court was pretty transparent in its findings and its expectations. And I just wanted to quote a couple or summarize a couple of passages. On pages 17 and 18 of the decision, paragraph 27, the court indicated that we're arguing that applying to our development, a calculation that excludes the density bonus units. The workforce subdivision results in a requirement of no open space. In paragraph 28, the court said, "We find the proffered computation eminently plausible." In Ludwig, by the writer's tool, "Eminently plausible," it defines as highly believable or credible. Merriam-Webster defines eminently as very and plausible, as worthy of belief. I respectfully submit that's a meaningful statement from the state Supreme Court justice. The court went on and said, "We must remand for the planning board to make the calculation, which may very well result in a finding that no open space is required." So in reviewing a subdivision application, the planning board must apply the plain language of ordinance provisions. Doing so, here's a pretty straightforward calculation. I would refer you to your previous findings, where you referred to this section 5, 16, 2, 3, you said that the standard doesn't apply, but you referred to the applicant's July 14, 2024 supplemental submission and some articles in the condominium declaration. That July 14, 2024 submission was on page eight, an open space plan that was provided to the board in 2024. That plan showed passive outdoor living space excluding rights-of-way buildings, parking lots, and impervious surfaces of 20,900 square feet. That is essentially twice the calculation that the neighbors say is required for open space. Regardless, section 5.16.2.3 says that the total area dedicated for open space has to equal or exceed the sum of the area by which the building lots are reduced below the zoning district's minimum lot size. Under open space requirements for workforce subdivisions, the section 5, 16, 2, 3 says that you must exclude density bonus units. Not exclude square footage of open space that you calculate for units, not any other calculation. It says, exclude the units. They don't exist for purposes of open space calculations. In the VR1 district where this property sits, there is a 10,000-square-foot minimum lot area requirement for properties hooked to sewer. There's a reference to losing of section 3.6A to B in your subdivision ordinance, none of which exists. The standards are set forth in section 3.5, that minimum lot area with sewer is 10,000 square feet. For workforce subdivisions, that lot area is the state minimum. Maine does not impose a minimum lot area for workforce subdivisions. Maine has a, in other words, there is zero open space requirements under Maine law for workforce subdivisions. When you apply, even if we go to the standard workforce, the standard area, lot area calculation, there's 10,000 feet per unit. We exclude the three bonus units. We have three non-bonus units on the lot. Each requires 10,000 feet, so you'd need 30,000 square feet to have standard lot area coverage for the three non-bonus units. We have, over that, we have almost 31,000 feet, 3,904, I think it is. I showed you the math in the written submission. The plain language of the ordinance, where you exclude density bonus units from open space calculations, means you're basically multiplying three times the required minimum lot area. And if we meet it, then there is no open space requirement, because open space is measured by how much those non-bonus units are going to reduce the lot area below the minimum that's required by the ordinance. Again, the neighbors suggest that you do some complicated calculations, where you first include lot areas for all six of our units, and then you somehow subtract some square footage calculation from that original math. That's not what the ordinance says. The formula is pretty clear. The formula and its difference for workforce subdivisions compared to other cluster subdivisions is clear. The law court in its opinion noted that there is a distinct difference between those. And when you apply the workforce calculations excluding density bonus units, the math is pretty straightforward. As I said, however, even if you agree somehow with the neighbors' calculations, which the November submission submitted for the first time, the first time it saw an open space calculation that they say is required. And I believe that the number was 10,398 feet, Mr. Burns argues, of open space. As we showed you back in July of 2024, we have 20,900 square feet of passive, open, outdoor area that is dedicated for the common use of our residents. And that meets all of the requirements, even if you were to apply a square footage open space requirement under this section. I don't think you can, but even if you were to do so, it's double the amount that the neighbors say is necessary. Any way that you do these calculations, we meet the standard. And I urge you to adopt findings that say that and to approve the application once and for all. Thank you, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Noel Musson, Greg Johnson, and Kathy Miller are all here. If you have factual questions about the submissions and the evidence, they'd be happy to help out as well.
Right. Thank you.
Before you go to Mr. Burns, you got an offer from counsel, which I suspect Mr. Burns will extend as well, and that is if the board members have questions you can ask. Now, you can also hold your questions if you want.
Why don't we hear from Mr. Burns and then think about questions? Mr. Burns?
All right, Chair Hanley, can you hear me?
I can, and I believe everybody, everybody in the room can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you for allowing me to appear via Zoom. I would be with you today. My daughter was born on Saturday, and this is my last meeting, standing between me and my parental leave. So I too hope that this will be a relatively brief meeting, and hopefully, one where the board can come to a determination today.
Interrupt Mr. Burns and say congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. But down to business, this is, this is an important issue, and one, obviously, that the town has been working through now for just about two years. As attorney Plegi stated, and as you, Mr. Chair, you know, talked through in summarizing why we are here today, the board made its original decision back in the fall of 2023. That decision, and you know, as was noted at the time, the, the Butters that I represent had a number of concerns related to the project, including the calculation of open space. So the matter was appealed. Eventually, it reached the law court, and the law court remanded back to you to apply the standards of section 5.16.2.3 to this application, which is something that the board did not do in the first go-around. Attorney Plegi notes that the court, in a couple of places, you know, indicates that it's entirely possible that upon remand, the board could determine that there, there is no requirement under this. There, there is no open space needed under this standard, but the court said correctly that it is up to this board, in the first instance, to apply the words of your ordinance to the facts of this application and decide what they mean. And the court did not say what, how this provision should be interpreted. They correctly said that it is up to you to do the job of, of the planning board, to, to make that determination. Now, you'll see in my submission, and as attorney Hamilton indicated, I think the, the meat of the calculation that, that we believe is required here begins on page three. But I would begin a little bit earlier than that by simply noting, as, as we noted in the first go-around here, the first stated goal of these cluster and workforce housing subdivisions is the preservation, the permanent protection of open space and recreational areas under the applicable version of the subdivision ordinance. I think it's, it's worth keeping in mind that the calculation that attorney Plegi and the applicant put forward, essentially read the open space requirement out of the ordinance. Their position here is that even if you have to apply 5.16.2, the answer is, is zero. The, one of the first rules of ordinance interpretation is that the board should try to avoid results that create illogical or absurd results here. I would, I would submit to you that the way that you're being asked to interpret this provision by the applicant would effectively read that standard out of the ordinance, even if you were to apply it here today. I would, I would challenge the, the applicants to provide the board with, with an example of, under their interpretation, when it would ever be appropriate to impose an open space requirement for workforce housing subdivision under this standard. I, I think the, the answer here is, is that certainly the way they're interpreting it as to this project, it, it simply doesn't make sense. You know, it, it doesn't pass the straight face test that the answer here would be zero when an open space provision is clearly laid out in your ordinance and clearly required for a workforce housing subdivision. But as attorney Plegi said, really where you have to begin is the plain language of your ordinance. And applying that plain language is your job here tonight. As has been said repeatedly, it's the applicant here who bears the burden to demonstrate that they meet the standards of this ordinance. If you determine that they cannot do so, the result here would be that you would have to deny the application. So getting to the text of this standard, we're talking about 5.16.2.3, which comes right after the calculation of the density bonus applicable to workforce housing subdivisions. Page three of my submittal states that the relevant paragraph in full here, under 5.16.2.3, it says, "The total area dedicated for open space must equal or exceed the sum of the area by which the building lots are reduced below the minimum lot size otherwise required for the respective zone, i.e. the noncluster subdivision minimum lot size. Open space requirement for workforce housing. When calculating the open space requirement for qualified workforce housing development, the density bonus units shall be excluded." Now, attorney Plegi arrives at zero here, because he's asking you to essentially read this backwards, to completely exclude the workforce housing development units and pretend that they do not exist at any point in this calculation. But the ordinance of the, the, the language of the ordinance tells you, you need to do some things before you exclude these units. As I lay out in my memo, the first sentence here, the first directive that the ordinance gives you is that the total area for open space must equal or exceed the sum of the area by which the building lots are reduced below the minimum lot size otherwise required for the respective zone. Now, the facts here, in terms of the dimensions of the property, are Now, the facts here in terms of the dimensions of the property are. Already in the record and they're not really being disputed here, right? So if, if we assume a lot size of thirty-nine thousand two hundred and four feet. Which is uh, what was included in the original decision that was upheld by the court. The parties agree that the applicable minimum lot size here is ten thousand square feet and that six units are proposed. So, what this provision is saying. Is that the total area dedicated for open space must equal or exceed the sum of the area. That that lot is reduced below the minimum lot size otherwise required for the zone. The zone requires ten thousand square feet per unit. Six units are being proposed. In a normal scenario here, that would require a minimum lot size of sixty thousand square feet. For six units to be placed on this property, on this lot. Even if you assume that this is a single lot, which again, the court has told us, yes, it should be treated as a single lot. So in the normal state of affairs, you would need sixty thousand square feet in order to place those six units on the property. The actual square footage of the property is thirty-nine thousand two hundred and four square feet. That is. Twenty thousand seven hundred ninety-six square feet less than sixty thousand. Another way of saying that is that the ten thousand square feet required for any unit. On this lot is being reduced by an amount that it's by a sum of. Twenty thousand seven hundred ninety-six square feet. You divide that among the units. And that gets you to six thousand five hundred and thirty-four square feet per unit. That number is the amount that the. Lot size is being effectively reduced, the minimum lot size is effectively being reduced by placing. That many units on the property. You multiply sixty-five thirty-four by six and you arrive at. Uh, that twenty thousand seven hundred ninety-six square feet number. That's just the difference between the minimum lot size applied to the number of lots. And the actual lot size of the property. That would be the normal calculation under this section. So here, if this were a cluster subdivision, for example. I think the answer here for how much open space would be required would be that difference between the. Between the required minimum lot size and the actual lot size that's being uh, proposed. For this number of units. However, you have a density bonus for affordable housing units under your ordinance. That is where the second sentence of this section comes in. It tells you that when calculating this open space requirement, the density bonus units shall be excluded. The, the only sensible way to interpret that language is that you are removing. That some difference that those three units would have, that, that delta between. The minimum lot size and the actual lot size. You need to remove those values for those three units from that calculation. Essentially, you're cutting the open space requirement in half as part of that bonus that you are giving. For the affordable housing development. So when you take those three units out of the equation. That gives you that ten thousand three hundred ninety-eight square feet number. That is thirty-four hundred sixty-six square feet times three, gives you ten thousand three hundred ninety-eight square feet. That is applying every word of that section. And it's doing it in a rational way that does not read this section out of the ordinance. Again, if the answer here that you're being provided with from the applicant is that. Well, yeah, the section applies, but you really don't apply it. I think the, the board should do, uh, should take a closer look at that language. And determine whether or not that was actually the intent of this ordinance to arrive at a, a place where. There is on its face an open space requirement, but nevertheless, no open space is required. Uh, the board can avoid that illogical result by adopting the calculations that, that we have provided. It will, it results in a, a reasonable uh, and rational uh, interpretation of your own ordinance. Uh, and one that I think makes intuitive sense in terms of how much space. Uh, should be dedicated here, given the scope and scale of the project. Now Attorney Puleggi, uh, I think argues in the alternative that even if you were to apply. Uh, this, uh, this calculation put forward to you that ten thousand three hundred ninety-eight square feet is required. Uh, he has made the, the alternative argument that, well, they would meet that standard anyway. Because there's ten, uh, there's about twenty thousand square feet of unbuilt space on this property. I would, I would say two things to that. One, your ordinance is specific as to what open space can be. And how it needs to be dedicated. Uh, the open space. Is space that is intended to be used for low intensity recreation. Subsurface wastewater disposal, agriculture, or other passive outdoor living purposes. And for, for preserving the natural features of the site. That open space cannot include rights of ways, parking areas, tennis courts, swimming pools, or other areas of impervious surface. Uh, or similar recreational development. So we're not talking about just any unbuilt space on the property. We're talking about space that is designed to be exactly what it sounds like. Open space for the common use of the occupants of the property. Uh, so, that number that's being put to you, uh, I think first if you determine that. This calculation is correct and that this amount of open space is required. The next question is, has the applicant actually set aside that amount of open space? That meets those standards under your ordinance. The applicant has set aside exactly no open space that is dedicated by a protected legal instrument. That is required under your ordinance. Now, your prior decision. Uh, under uh, section five point ten did require the applicant to set aside. Uh, I believe sixteen hundred square feet of open space uh, as part of, as a condition of your prior approval. But under five point sixteen, that open space more is required than simply the applicant saying, well, yeah, we have. We have space that's unbuilt on the property. That, the applicant is required under the ordinance. To demonstrate that that space is being legally set aside. Legally protected by an instrument that is acceptable to this board. And that sets aside this space for the common benefit of the members of this future subdivision. Uh, and I would submit to you that they haven't done that. So if the answer here is that any amount of open space is required under this ordinance. The board needs to determine that whether the applicant has actually designated and protected that amount of open space. As part of their application. They have the burden here. They need to show you that they are meeting these standards. Uh, and that is something that I think they, they have not addressed in their submissions to you here. Um, and something that they would need to address, uh, if this application was going to be approved. It's entirely possible that at the other end of that work, the applicant can come to you and say, yeah, we have ten thousand square feet. That meets the standards under the app, under the ordinance and that is legally protected, um, and set aside. Here's the instrument that we will be using to do that. Uh, and we meet this standard. They haven't done that. And in the absence of doing that. I think you have to deny the application on this basis. This standard, the court has said, is applicable here. Some amount of open space needs to be set aside under this standard. I think the calculation that we have provided here is the, the calculation that is required under your ordinance. But in any event, even if the board determines that some other numbers required, the. Result would be the same because the applicant here has not adequately set aside any open space. That would meet the standard under five point sixteen point two point three. Uh, so again, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has uh, about the calculation. Uh, I would thank the board, especially for the members who had to familiarize yourselves with this record as someone who. Uh, has, has sat in on all of these planning board meetings. I understand how big of a task that was. Um, so thank you for the time that you have already committed to this project. It's very important. To not just the applicant, but the members of this community, the neighbors that I represent. There, you know, there, there's a, a lot of concerns about this project. So I thank you for the work that you have already done and the work that you still are going to do. Um, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Andy, procedurally from here, we would go back to Dan and then go back to Mr. Burns and then continue on.
Yep, I think the board should have questions of both Attorney Plegi and Attorney Burns and. I'll have some questions as well, but I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman. Davidson approach.
So, based on that procedure we discussed at the beginning of the hearing, I'm gonna turn it back over to Dan. And then hear from Mr. Burns and then. And let's, let's talk. How's that sound?
Yeah, I, I think frankly, the positions of the parties are made clear in their written submittals and tonight in their oral presentations. If either attorney feels the need to be responsive to the oral presentations, that's fine. But I think it's as both Attorney Plegi and Attorney Burns have said. It's for the board to stick handle through these questions related strictly to fifteen points, five point sixteen. Um, three, two.
Yeah, so Dan, you've got your hand off if I saw that correctly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in your original findings, your original decision. Um, when you talked about open space, you noted, you made reference to condominium declaration articles four, seven. And eight and talking about passive outdoor living space of twenty thousand nine hundred feet, fifty-three percent of the lot. That's in your findings. A condominium declaration is. A required to be a recorded instrument in the registry of deeds. And we have given you the condominium declaration for this development. That identifies the twenty thousand nine hundred square feet as common elements. They are not owned by any unit owner. They are um, uh, in large part landscaping. Uh, open space for passive recreation. The condominium declaration includes. Requirements for common upkeep maintenance. It puts a, it creates a condominium association. That is charged with responsibility for upkeep and maintenance and the financial responsibility. For that upkeep and maintenance is distributed among the unit owners. That respectfully is a recorded instrument that preserves. The development, the passive space, the units. We can't alter that without um, an approval, approval from you. Um, or another, and, and another recorded um, uh, condominium plan, an amendment. Maybe to the plan. So we'd need a new amended subdivision and we would need an amended condominium declaration. In order to um, to change what is protected. And if you go through the reasons for open space that are listed in your ordinance. They're all those same reasons, the passive recreation um, uh, types of uses that we are proposing for the area. So, if you were to place some, if you were to do math. That imposed a square footage of open space requirements upon us. We meet it and it's, and it's protected. Respectfully, however, there is no way to read the ordinance to do the math that Mr. Burns is asking you to do. Cause not what it says. The ordinance is very simple and it says to ignore the um, uh, workforce density bonus units. It doesn't say do math, calculate something and then do a discount. Prorated discount of square feet based on what you found were density bonus units. If your ordinance had intended that. It would have said it, it doesn't. Evidently plausible means something coming from the law court means more. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Burns, any comment there?
Uh, apart from thanking the board for its consideration, not much. Uh, I'll, I'll note. Uh, simply that the, uh, the language that Attorney Puleggi uh, continues to reference from the law court decision is, is what lawyers call dicta. It is something that has no legal, uh, it, it's not something that legally binds this board. And the upshot of the court's decision is to do exactly what this board is doing right now. Which is to apply the language of the ordinance to the facts of this case. Uh, in terms of the. Amount of the preserved open space that is available on the site, again. Uh, I would strongly encourage the board to inquire carefully about the. Character of that air, of that, uh, that square footage, that area that Attorney Plegi and the applicant are discussing. That reserved area of open space, the area that has to be reserved under that, uh, the applicable ordinance provision here. Needs to be dedicated to certain uses and cannot include impervious surfaces. So again, I would encourage the board um, to. Not simply take that uh, that amount that is being stated by the applicant as gospel. I think more is required here in terms of the character of that open space. Um, and that square footage that's being set aside. It must be exclusive of any impervious surface, any parking area. Uh, and the other specific criteria that are included in those later. Uh, subsections within five point sixteen point two. Uh, but with that, um, again, happy to answer any questions that the board has. Um, and I wish you good luck in this last leg of your analysis of this application. So, here we are.
So you, you might ask questions of the applicant's counsel. As to page eight of the July. Fourteen submission. Because uh, one prong of his argument relies upon. An article of evidence that you already have in your record, but you may want to dig out and look at it. So I heard him to say page eight of the July fourteenth supplemental, uh, submitting. I, I don't have that at hand, but I'm sure you, the code officer or the applicant does.
Right here.
So you're referring to as open space is the green dotted area?
Yeah, it was, this was called the open space plan in that July fourteenth submission.
Says open space, yep. Uh, be good to hand that down. Okay.
It does not include the impervious surfaces, the buildings, the roads, or the right of way that others.
So to toggle to uh, Attorney Burns just for a moment. Um, I've been looking at section five point sixteen one one. If, if you have a wholesome copy of the subdivision ordinance board numbers, maybe good to look at your entire subdivision ordinance provision. But um, I want to know from Attorney Burns. Where he derived his definitions, uses, purposes of open space that he articulated in multiple parts. In his presentation. Take us to the ordinance provision that sets that forth.
Andy, before we get into the.
What I'm trying to do is provide grist that may be helpful to the board in your deliberations and I don't want to close the presentations of the parties.
Right here.
That, that says the, the purposes for which it may be used. It doesn't say that that's open space. Um, my question of Attorney Burns. Takes it back to. Um, five point sixteen point one, I think. And he's, he's actually acknowledged it in his submittal, it's for permanently protected open space and recreational areas. So what I'm trying to, to get at is if. The argument is we're not providing open space. I, I've heard the applicant respond to that. But I wanted to hear his thoughts on open space, where, where it comes from.
So, two things, the, the, the purpose statement. Relating to the purpose of the cluster housing and workforce subdivision standards in general. Is five, that's section fifteen, excuse me, five point sixteen point one is states out the purposes of the ordinance. Or of that ordinance section, and that's where the, the stated goal to. Create housing that will result, that will result in permanently protected open space and recreational areas. But what, what I'm referring to substantively are the, there are a set of open space standards. That follow the, the paragraph in five point sixteen point two point three. So I believe it is the following sub paragraph in five point sixteen point two that talks about. The requirements for open space that is dedicated under five point sixteen point two. And that's where it sets out that that open space cannot include impervious surface. It, it must be allocated for. You know, recreational, preservational purposes, that language is contained, I think immediately following. The calculation language in five point sixteen point two.
I see that, and then one other question for Attorney Burns before I go back to Attorney Pelagi, just, just trying to understand their positions. When you look at five point sixteen. Point two, three. You're both looking at point two, three, A. Which says what it says, you both quoted in your materials. If, if the job of any board or court construing ordinance language is to read it as a whole. How do you respond to this question, Attorney Burns? It says open space requirement for workforce housing. When calculating the open space requirement for qualified workforce housing development, the density bonus unit shall be excluded. It seems to me that clause is directing the board. To do a calculation that already excludes the density bonus units. You seem to start at an earlier point. Which takes it outside of workforce housing in that provision three A. I just want to understand, how do you respond to? The rule of construction? That you read it as a whole, and when you do. In the context of workforce housing, you start with calculating the open space requirement. By excluding the density bonus units, you don't start by including, you exclude them.
I, I, I would say two things to that Attorney Hamilton, the, the first being, and without being too flip here. Your, your read of that ordinance is not what matters here, it's the board's reading. And I think, you know, it's, it's their interpretation that is going to have to carry the day here. That said. That's it, the. The ordinance must be read as a whole, but it also must be read as it reads. The sentence that excludes the density bonus units from the calculation. Is the second sentence in that paragraph, it does not say at the outset. That before you begin any of these calculations, exclude all of these, these bonus units. It sets out a calculation for dedicated open space and then says. When you're calculating, when you're undertaking that calculation described in the previous sentence. The density units should be excluded from that calculation. It's not saying that you exclude the units, you know, in, in toto, right? Or, you know, exclude them from, you know. You, you don't pretend that they don't exist, you exclude the, those units from that specific. calculation that is happening above, right? So again, there is an amount. Go ahead.
I understand your position, so i- if, if you will, Attorney Burns, back to Attorney Pelagi. What about his construction of the same provision? That the law court quoted and you guys are quoting in your materials? What do you say to Attorney Burns' argument just now in terms of how you construe that paragraph A, Attorney Pelagi? Because this is where, this is where the difference is in your positions. He, he starts with a prior calculation, you start with that calculation. Just want to understand how you construe subsection A under open space requirements, three A.
The applicant reads the plain language of that section. To mean that when you begin the calculations, when you do any calculations relating to open space requirements for qualified workforce housing development. The density bonus, bonus units shall be excluded, because that's the plain language.
For the board, that's the difference in views.
Yep, got it. So we've got plenty to discuss here, but one of the, one of the first items I wanted to gauge the. Board's temperature on is public comments. Yeah, it's like we would be at a point if we were. To open it for public comment and that public comment being extremely focused to the issue at hand. Only. Maybe we should consider doing that now.
Sounds good.
Yep, yep.
I make a motion to have public. I'll second the motion.
All right, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm gonna open it up for public comments on very focused, laser focused public comment. Please state your name for the record and.
Jerry Summersby. By background, I. Having, which is part of the ordinance that you're covering with. But I provided you the materials before on, they gave examples on how we were. Presenting cluster subdivision, cluster subdivision only, see the cluster subdivision with or without workforce. I refer you to note K in the Luzo subdivision dimensional requirements. It says that the, the, you know, the, the reduced lot sizes are only. For cluster, for workforce housing developed in a cluster subdivision. They're married right there in K and put them in at the same time. No such thing as a workforce subdivision that isn't a cluster, because we took, what we did is we rewrote. The cluster subdivision, which is planned use development, and we rewrote it for open space. And we added it to the, and we, what, what basically here. Is that we intended to provide the planning board a toolkit. The toolkit was meant to address and grace and reconcile the NIMBY factor upfront. It was, it was in your backyard, but care. So we can buy up open space, cluster subdivision, with, with, you know, permanently protected open space. And we said if you can do it with a tight cluster, you can have more for the, and, and provides some workforce house. We did not write it for, for land trust, we wrote it for developer. The intention here was to lower the land value, the site value for the individual lots. What is really. Mind boggling is that embracing this, it's a tight lot to do with cluster subdivision, because it doesn't have a lot of. Lot of acreage, we, we quite frankly. Started a lot with the, the typical, the project was, you know, twenty-eight acres in, in, in two acre zoning. Fourteen acre, a fourteen acre subdivision, we said, well, you can save the back half for, for open space. And, and cluster on the front. But what's very frustrating is, is that when we put in the, why we put in the open space. One of the requirements, permanently protected, but also when possible to, to have it towards, towards the public side of the developer. So, I mean, you could have. On this property, you, you could have sold the house at, at, at open market. Protected the corner with open space and subsidized, lower the land value. For, you know, for some housing in, in back. And. It's frustrating you did not embrace the toolkit, because we wouldn't be here tonight. Okay, and it's possible that we've already went ahead. Families in these houses that, that would already have kids going into, into grammar school or nursery school. But, you know, you, you kind of, you've accepted the, the interpretation. I heard Noel say that they were two separate things from the gate bill, they weren't, they never were. They were always clustered subdivision, and we said, if we're going to do cluster subdivision. We're gonna, we, we can do it, we add, we can add some workforce housing. The court has some issues with workforce housing and, and open space are two, two conflicting goals. They're not. We took the results, the conference and plan, and that two overwhelming responses, protect open space and workforce houses. And we said, being in the town of Officer, we can chew gum and walk at the same time, we can do both. Ironically here, I believe Andy was you at the, the hearing this, that wanted us to pass a resolution. That combining these two, marrying the two concepts together. And you, I, it's a long time ago, Andy, I think it was you that said, you know, you need to draft a resolution to combine these two, to do these together. We did, wrote the ordinance. And then, and here, here we are, but I refer, if you don't, if you don't, haven't digested the materials that already sent you. All you need to do is look at note K in subdivision. In the Luzo, it very clearly marries cluster, and the density bonus is only allowed in a cluster subdivision.
Well, that's not what the court was saying.
That's what your Luzo says. Put in, adopt it at the same time subdivision ordinance. And do the subdivision clusters, open space cluster subdivision with or without workforce housing. We needed to adjust the dimensional table in Luzo. Note K only for cluster subdivision.
So just to provide a little bit of direction to the board in response to Mr. Summersby's good thoughts. Page seventeen of the law court decision you have. Tab three, let me just finish Mr. Summersby. That, that discussion by the court says the following, we apply these principles to reading the text of section five point sixteen two, three. Which is the section that is the subject of the remand, the land use ordinance provision is not before the board. Because it's not part of the remand, we're focused on the remand. Two points emerged, there's an open space requirement for workforce housing subdivisions, and two. That requirement differs from the requirement for cluster housing subdivisions. I, I don't want to dispute anything that Mr. Summersby has said, although I don't agree with it all. But that's, that's not my purpose, my purpose is to just ask the board to stay focused. Within the four corners of the remand, and the court has said. The open space requirement for workforce housing is, is a different requirement than for cluster housing subdivisions. That's on top of page seventeen and paragraph twenty-six of the law court's decision and. I don't remember the resolution advice, but maybe that I, maybe that I did.
Is, is the board not, it, it, I, I listened to Andy, but it's the board, I mean, I thought we were a small town without the board. You know, hears it out, makes it, makes a common sense to solutions. It's what we try to do with the zoning board of appeals when something gets hit from you guys. To us, is, you know, we, we listen to the, we go back and look, did we, did we. Digest all the facts and, you know, did we miss something? In this case, I think you missed the whole intent of having this ordinance. Yes, you can look at what the court does, or, you know, once again. If we embraced it the first time, we wouldn't be here.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna keep going with the public comment, any other? Anybody else got anything to convey to the board here, the record? Anybody out there in Zoom land? Can we change or try to change the view again, Kim? Because I'm only seeing like three people on the board, like.
The speaker's gonna go directly to. Who's talking.
Yeah, can you click on, just out of curiosity, multi-speaker?
I think most people have their videos turned off.
Okay. Okay. Pretty quiet in here.
Awaiting your decision.
Yes, of course, so I think the current decision is to. Close public comment. So, going once, twice. Right, public comments closed, let's. Continue with the board's discussion on this matter, and. I think again, I'm gonna circle back to one of my initial statements is I. We've got some math to do here and. Determining. The calculation of that math, I think is. Ask number one.
And I just add that I think this board needs a precedent, and it needs to be set tonight with good solid math. Because this is going to come up again, and I. Tried to find if there was precedent, people ripple subdivision, didn't see the calculation, so.
Actually, to address that, Anne. The town is in the process of doing a wholesale amendment of its subdivision ordinance, as you know. And so this precedent might be tonight. But I, I do think your point is well taken, the chairman's point is well taken, and that is. I think it's, it is a two-step process, you've got to figure out what formulation accords with the plain text of your ordinance. And then apply that formulation to derive the calculation. That's really where the debate is between the two parties. You, you can see it clearly on page three. Of tab five and page three of tab eight. And that's where I'd start, because if you can come to consensus as a board. As to which way you apply five point sixteen two, three. Then that's the first part, then the question is, once you determine what the formulation should be, then you do the calculation. But there's a real difference between the applicant's position. And it's very good to hear the lawyer say. Two very relevant ways of looking at this, one is Attorney Pelagi said the law court found. A calculation that had already been introduced into the record from the applicant and then briefed as an appellee. Before the law court was derive a calculation of zero space. They found that that was imminently plausible, and then you heard Attorney Burns, I think correctly say, but that's dicta. And I think both attorneys have said, the board has to interpret and apply. The plain language of the order, so I'd start there with five point sixteen two, three. And ask yourself that same quoted provision that both attorneys look to. How does the board interpret that provision? And it's gonna take a little bit of work, I, I would predict, to come to your interpretation of that provision.
I mean, just to jump in around here, but the, you know, in. Begin to summarize these two presentations of, of open space requirement calculations, Mr. Pelagi's. Mr. Plegies is a bit more straightforward than Mr. Burns and. Um, and if I may, I'd just like to circle back for the board to five sixteen two, three. And just again, um, read this because I mean, this is what it all comes down to is that the total area dedicated for open space must equal or exceed the sum of the area by which the building lots are reduced below the minimum lot size and otherwise required for the respective zone. The open space requirement for workforce housing colon. When calculating the open space requirement for qualified workforce housing development, which we have determined this is, the density bonus units shall be excluded.
So I see that you start with two math directions, total area dedicated for open space. That's a number, total area.
Yep.
Then it must equal the sum, another number of the area by which the building lots were reduced. That's the number. What's that number? And then we exclude the three density bonus units. And we have the number. That's how I read it. But. China.
Right, how do you other math majors? I.
I'm confused by the, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, uh, the reducing the three units. So that that is what I don't quite understand. Are we?
So that was part of Mr. Burns' initial presentation of where, um, you know, essentially that was the math of the 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 total lot area.
Didn't you have to pump with that number to determine that six units were allowed on the property? You you gave them a a quantifiable number that says this is how much they're being reduced by. So you got the number.
We've got the number and we've got, we've got the number and the number of units and.
But you're gonna exclude the dense, three density bonus units in the calculation at the end.
At the end of it.
That's the way I read it, but.
Yeah, I think there's two reasonable constructions. One is the way you just stated. I think that's a reasonable construction. Another reasonable construction is when you're talking about workforce housing, before you even start the calculations, you exclude the density bonus units. What's really interesting to me is to take the ordinance as a whole and look at the difference between how you do density bonus calculation and then how you do open space calculation, the two very different approaches. And so what I am struck by is you can isolate just on three A, or you can take it in the context of the density bonus and look at the differences between the two. And I grant Mr. Summersby's earlier comment that part of what you're trying to do is figure out what's, what's the purpose of the ordinance that's being expressed in its plain language. But ultimately, what you got to come back to is this very provision that the law court cites in three man saying you determined that for workforce housing, there was no open space requirement. The court said that 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 dog won't hunt. You've got to determine what the open space requirement is for workforce housing. And I think the way I read it, um, is that the second sentence is part of the same clause that includes the first sentence. And I I can see either way, but I think it's slightly more credible to say what are they trying to do for the open space requirement for workforce housing, which is the project you have before you? And if you take that category of workforce housing, I think this is a prior instruction, may appear in the second sentence, but it's saying in the case of workforce housing, you gotta deduct the bonus units first and.
It doesn't say first. It says when calculating.
But it doesn't say second either.
But it comes second. Math calculations.
I mean, is it is the wording of that essentially, uh, like a a legacy of the lack of clear prior clarification between a a clustered subdivision in a workforce housing subdivision?
Yeah, I mean, you could look at page seventeen of the law court opinion, um, paragraph twenty eight, twenty eight, I think it was that I read from. And you can look to their agreement with the board's prior decision that there is a difference between workforce housing and cluster housing as it relates to open space.
They also say clearly imposes some open space requirement for workforce housing right after.
Yes, I.
Six units.
I agree with you, member Dalton. And that's where the court took issue with the planning board's decision. The only thing they took issue with of the whole decision was just this one issue. So now they're saying there must be an open space requirement for workforce housing, do the calculation. And I think there really are two alternative views that have been expressed in the two presentations tonight. One view is you start with a total calculation of open space and then you deduct for workforce housing. The other would say, because your application before you is a workforce housing application, you deduct upfront. And those are the two different positions. It's just, it's stark to me when I look at page three of each of their submittals. They're they're taking two different approaches to the same text, and I think they're two reasonable positions. But it's your job as a planning board to determine what you think is the more reasonable interpretation and make it yours. That's the point.
So in a nutshell, do we divide by six or three?
Hmm, that's one part of it. I agree. Yep.
For what it's worth, when I was going through this, um, latter explanation that you deduct upfront was what stuck in my mind. You know, we, the court didn't quibble with the density calculations. So I do think we are stuck with that number. And that's what we need to use. Three or three point nine, you don't want around. Yeah, I mean, I think we talk a lot about the intent of this and it's to preserve open space. But the calculation is gonna be different for each subdivision that comes before the sport. And I think right now we're just dealing with a small lot. It's gonna be wildly different if it's a twenty acre lot.
But the math should be the same.
The math should be the same.
The formula should be the same. The calculation is numbers. That's why I say I think the the threshold question for the board is, and I think member Dalton and member Burke have expressed it in different ways on the board. Uh, it'll be up to a majority of the board to decide what's the formula? And then apply the formula to derive the calculation. But the threshold question is a formula. What is the language telling you the formula is?
I read that pair, I read the five sixteen two, three paragraphs. Okay, here's the formula. And by the way, if it's a work workforce housing, then then you don't include the the bonus density. And I think that again, that comes back to the legacy of the, just the those two, those two concepts being a bit more separated than they are now.
Can you follow the math on that for the first two sen- in the first sentence? Total area dedicated for open space must equal or exceed the sum of the area by which the building lots are reduced. So if you've applied your respective to those two math calculations, what would that come up?
Well, we know we're working with thirty nine two oh four, right? So that's a known.
That's not the total area dedicated for open space. That's the total area.
That's the total area. And we know what the minimum, I'm just I like to start with what we know and we we all know that the minimum lot size is per unit is ten thousand square feet. And and let's follow along with the language of that.
As as an aid to your question, um, Mr. Chairman, member Dalton, you can also look at page three of each of the attorneys of those.
That's exactly what I'm doing. I've got page three of Mr. Plegies and I got page three of Mr. Burns. So the total area dedicated for open space must equal or exceed the sum of the area by which the building lots are reduced below the minimum lot size. And we're in the context of workforce housing. So. So if we're taking and you guys chime in here too as I wade through math here, but.
What's sticking out to me is that.
Go ahead.
We like we have one lot. We haven't reduced that lot any.
You reduce the requirements to build upon that lot. That's the number we're looking for. What were they reduced?
Before density.
Just that is the density. You can use the lots.
The number.
Get them on the lot. To get six lots on the lot, you gave them a bonus.
We gave them a three, three unit bonus. That's the density bonus.
It was thirty thousand.
Which is, no, which is units. We're talking about not lots, not lots.
Yeah, but they're ten thousand per unit.
So. Why?
I do, I do think that the, I mean, I think one of the things is it is written for the concept of cluster subdivision. So if you don't think of this calculation in terms of this project, uh, say the ripple or some other, where you have a minimum lot size of, say, two acres. Um, and you say, well, everybody's going to be clustered together on this great big property. We're gonna give them each one acre lot. What it's saying is one acre that you've you've taken the requirement two acres clustered it. So there each lot's only required to be one acre. And the lost acre now has to become open designated and open protected land. I mean, it's a, it's a very simple concept in in like a big lot. This isn't have individual lots. So that's what I just don't even, like, my brain's really twisting to make this into a calculation in this situation because uh, it it's the square footage allowed per per unit, but we haven't reduced, it's it's making that a lot size that.
I struggled with this too. That, I mean, lot is a defined term as is. Yeah, I don't, I.
And I just don't think a unit can be considered. But is, but is there a a minimum area requirement per unit then?
How did you get six units on an acre? You gave them a bonus to get them on the acre. That's, I think, the number that in my mind you have to use. And the goal is to provide open space. That was the first requirement. Like we need to calculate open space, I remember.
Agreed.
There is an interesting perspective in what number Burke said, and I'm going back to five point sixteen two, three. And if you use the singular total area dedicated for open space must equal or exceed the sum of the area by which the building lot is reduced below the minimum lot size otherwise required for the respective zone. And then when I look at attorney Plegies, page three, and I'll get to attorney Burns, page three in just a moment, but what he's saying is, and it's true, um, in terms of the procedural posture of this case. A superior court and law court have upheld the planning board's determination that the proposed development of workforce housing is defined. They also, as I said earlier, paragraph twenty eight on the top of page seventeen of the law court's opinion, said for purposes of open space, workforce housing has a different open space requirement than cluster housing. So if you're fetched up on cluster housing, free your mind. The law court's already said, this is a workforce housing application. Next sentence, reportedly, the three non-bonus proposed dwelling units are allowed on the lot without any reduction of standard lot size requirements. So he takes thirty nine thousand two hundred and four square feet, which is the size of this lot, divides it by ten thousand square feet, and he gets three point nine two units.
And ten thousand square feet being the minimum lot size.
Exactly. As a proposed development contains three non-bos- bonus units, all of which are permitted without lot size reduction based upon a plain language of Luso, section three point five. Section five point sixteen two, three imposes no mandatory dedicated open space requirement. Let me park that for a moment. Then he does the mathematical formula using that formulation. Thirty nine two oh four divided by three is thirteen thousand sixty eight. Thirteen thousand sixty eight per unit is greater than ten thousand. So you haven't reduced it is his position. Then you go over attorney Burns, page three. And you've got the opposite view because he's, uh, attorney Burns is starting with the first sentence as though it applies the way it's written. Even if you've got workforce housing, and a piece I struggle with is why did the authors of this provision for open space, that being the town meeting or the ordinance review committee up through the planning board to the town meeting? Why did you include the second sentence to draw a distinction between cluster housing and workforce housing as to open space? If you didn't intend that, why'd you include the second sentence? It must be describing that for the open space requirement for workforce housing, um, you exclude it and density bonus units. So that to me pivots with the second step of attorney Burns uh, calculation is where you start. Uh, if you don't start with this first, I think it it yields an absurd result for workforce housing if you do it that way. And the courts have been clear you're not to construe your ordinances to create an absurd result. Um, I just, I I I can't get my head wrapped around the fact that you ignore the second provision uh, in subsection A of three. Uh, I think you start there. So. But enough of me. You need to see if there's a majority view between the two positions of the two determinants as to the interpretation and how you formulate before you do the calculation. You haven't heard from either member Loftus or member Henry Lee, all of those you've heard from.
Tracy.
Well, I would, I would think that since we've been asked to interpret it using the plain language, the 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 simpler of the two calculations would be more in line with that.
Alan?
Well, I'm looking at on tab four page nineteen twenty eight, where it says to exclude the density bonus units. So that means we're talking about three B units when we do the calculations. Where attorney Burns always says six. So I think with what it says on that page, that we should be dealing with three units.
I think five, five sixteen two point three spells out the formula. And then it says, okay, if you're workforce housing, then you exclude it and we're starting with with three instead of six, as we work through that formula.
So are you saying that you you calculate six units? So are you saying that you, you calculate six units, ten thousand per unit and how the loss of. The difference between. And.
We'll start with three.
We start with three.
Well, then you're saying that it would be. How small would the lot be that would ever have? It had to be over thirty thousand. A square foot lot to start off with, to start with the. That there could be three buildings on the lot. So if you say exclude the missing three. You've started off with a lot that was too small to even put three in itself.
So the. Yeah. They're three units.
Right from the beginning. So how are we coming up with, if, if you're saying exclude the. The extra density units, then you never come up with a lot that was, there is never any. Uh, calculation to be had.
So we would.
We had thirty nine thousand square feet.
And for your.
Ten thousand minimum. Well, that's, that's, that's where I was getting my three rounding down from three point nine.
You have that root density, right?
Right. So, and so there would be no open space calculation according to that, right?
The calculation would equal, you know.
So what's the scenario where you would come up with the calculation? You'd have to have a lot that was.
Yeah.
Smaller than thirty thousand square feet, which wouldn't allow for three lots. So we wouldn't start up, you know, you shouldn't start.
Or if this, or if, yeah, or if you started with more units.
Correct. It's, it's binary. It would be either larger lot or it would be. Uh, more. Bonus units. That would inform your, your formulation and calculation. And so I think you gotta look at both of those. It's, it's both lot area as well as the number of. Workforce housing units. Because that's what the, that's what the language says. You look, the total area dedicated for open space must equal or exceed the sum of the area by which the building lot. Is reduced below the minimum lot size otherwise required for the respective zones. And. What I hear as an evolving. Um, view is that. With three point nine acres, you've got the thirty thousand square feet that's required for the. Excluded. Excuse me, the non-excluded. Um, workforce housing units. So you exclude three and you're left with three.
Yes.
That doesn't give you a calculation for open space. I mean, it comes out to be zero, but that to me is not what the ordinance is asking us to do. But to me, that's saying, that's the regular zoning requirement for the town amount desert. And it doesn't take into account what we're actually trying to do is calculate opens, open space when you have a workforce housing. Um, applicable. It just ignores the fact that there's actually six units on the property. It just completely ignores it. It doesn't.
Ignore, ignores three, doesn't ignore all six.
But it ignores the other three. That calculation just doesn't even take them into account.
I think the problem is that it's because it applies to the calculation is designed for cluster. Housing where we're reducing lots and we're not, and it just, it just simply doesn't. That's, there's no scenario where you, in this case. Like the whole, the whole project started with the, we can put three houses on here. Now, how do we make it workforce and how much? More density. So the concept of, well, how much did you, have you reduced the lot? You wouldn't, you can't start off the project. You've got to have the equivalent of the, the amount.
The court, the court remand acknowledged that we may come up with a calculation that doesn't require. The results and. Open space not being required.
I, I have a question. On tab six, page three. Uh, it has a. Thing with a minimum lot areas. And it says workforce subdivision state minimum. It doesn't have a square footage for that where everything else, the other ones, five thousand, ten thousand. Do we know what? The state minimum is for workforce subdivision.
Well, they touched upon that in the initial introduction, but Mr. Paul.
They fill in that blank.
The blank is strictly generally is that there is no statement, there's no requirement of open space that is followed by statute.
But that is the minimum.
Right.
None.
They don't, the legislature didn't address it. There's no open space requirements.
We're not supposed to revert back to cluster because it's not workforce. But workforce says five thousand square feet.
I, I think what you've said tonight as a board is that this is not a perfect provision. Nonetheless, you have to apply it. So.
Did I? Everybody saw this.
Yes.
Right? And.
Yeah.
So you, God, like.
This is a bill just for the.
It's the. Open space, uh, sketch.
Okay.
What's the date on that?
It was from the July fourteen packet, I think.
You remember the date on that.
July fourteen, twenty twenty three, I think.
Yep.
And, uh, page eight of that submission. I didn't know I'd be handing it in today, so I couldn't give you the whole submission. I thought you had it.
There's, there's twenty thousand square feet of. Green space there. You know, excludes the driveways. It's, um. It's, you know, they.
Twenty thousand nine hundred.
Twenty thousand nine hundred square feet and they, they talk about that, that that's also. Identified in the condominium, condominium. Evidence is.
Condominium declaration.
Declaration. Thank you. So.
Plan as well.
Yep. And so, you know, and five sixteen, two, three talks about that. You know, the, this kind of open space is for low intensity recreation, wastewater disposal, agriculture, other passive. Outdoor living purposes, you know, and preserving the natural features of its site. So. You know, we've got twenty thousand square feet of undeveloped area. On this property and the total property is thirty nine thousand. Two oh four and. You know, one, one of my questions with that, and just make sure I understand the context of. How this is being used when we're, you know, it's, it's a workforce housing. Development is, you know, and how it. It, it's organ, it's allowed within the condominium bylaws is, uh, I, I would assume you could go anywhere. On this plan in green and use it if you were. And hey, if you were a resident of one of the units on the lot, right? There's.
If you were, so the way the condominium declaration is set up is all of those green. There are more common area, common elements, but all of the green areas on that page. Are parts of the common elements. They're owned in common by the entire, by all of the unit owners. They're managed by an association. That is a group of the owners paid for. Pro rata by unit owners for the maintenance and upkeep. And they are accessible to everyone that lives there. That answer the question?
Yeah, and then it's, it's the.
Commentary.
Yeah, it's the common area of the law and it's, you know, it puts in, I think, into context. How ownership works on this property where you're, you're in ownership of a unit and not necessarily an area of.
Is it an internal or external condominium?
The condominium is the entire structure, the building.
So it's external wall. So everything outside the external wall. Within which you as a unit owner own is common space, common. And anybody in that development can use the green dotted areas, what do you say?
So I would think of like in a broader or larger scale development, you might have like a. Open space requirement dedicated for recreation where there's, you know, okay, it's this cool little. You know, treat area over here and, you know, and you may. You know, picnics or whatever here, you know, in a potentially more dedicated area, but in this case. You know, we're talking about, we're talking about units on a single lot and essentially. Any of these units could have a kid's birthday party anywhere on the green area of the lot. So it's. When we're, we're talking about. Open space. Even if we arrived at a calculation. Starting with three units that. That landed at a number where no open space was being required. There's still twenty thousand square feet on this lot. Where you could have a kid's birthday party.
It's communal open.
It's communal.
You've also preserved space under section five, ten. There's a, there's a rectangular area noted on there. That you've preserved for treat areas and vegetation. That's protected. Still a common area. It's still accessible to everybody that lives there. But it's preserved as well by. You got by, by your direction.
So it's clear from the board's decision what that area is that you mentioned second, Attorney Pelagian, that's sixteen hundred square feet. Can you speak into the record what the green dotted area represents as an area? What's this, what's the square footage of that area, the green dotted area?
Twenty thousand nine hundred.
Twenty thousand nine hundred. Okay, thank you. I mean, from the perspective of counsel for the board, I wouldn't mind if you used belt and suspenders. But I wouldn't. Try to, um. Bootstrap your position. From failing to look at what's the formula. Uh, do that first and then get to this second question of even if Attorney Burns interpretation is correct. Then use page eight of that exhibit, but I think you gotta do those in sequence. And my concern is you don't want to try to bootstrap compliance with the ordinance by failing to, to nail down. Where you are as a majority on the first question.
Yeah, I took a. Maybe a sidebar there to talk about this.
That's fair.
The, on, on. I think in a nutshell, what I was trying to say is this twenty thousand nine hundred square feet is. Is I think it's relative to a calculation if we follow Mr. Pelagie's approach or we follow Mr. Burns' approach.
That's right, but I wouldn't, I, 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 I wouldn't try to say we're going to option two because we find option one to be a tie. You need to decide option, you know, step one first. And then, as, as you said just now, Mr. Chairman, get the step two.
Also for what's worked, when I was wrestling with this. I found. Going back to what type of subdivision this is was sort of helpful. You know, you've got your land division where you have lots, right? But this is, this is not that. This is by development. And it's, but it's still on just one lot. So, go ahead. No, I'm still, it's still congealing. You know, where you have a land subdivision. Yes, open space would be. I think there would be a calculate way. There's a, there will be a calculatable area. Whether it's zero or not, I don't know. But it would be. The lots would be reduced on a land subdivision. And then you'd, you'd actually have, you'd have a number to work with where, where lots were reduced beyond below. The minimum lot size for that district. Here, we've got. Just one lot. It's. Using, using the density calculation that we, that the board has. It, it, it comes to over ten thousand square feet.
And then here we're not reducing lot size, we're reducing area per unit.
Unit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Area unit.
Yeah.
Unit, it doesn't say area.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Can I, can I address something to try to? Just expand, let's examine this. This is an all workforce subdivision. That doesn't happen all the time. It's very common in development law in other towns or other developments. To agree to a portion of the development being affordable housing units or workforce housing. And others being just standard cluster. So you can get a maximum value out of them. And that's when you get into these types of, when the calculations become. Uh, meaningful. How many workforce units out of the total? Get a density bonus. How many, how many, how many get excluded for purposes of open space calculations? How many of your other units get, um, open space requirements because they're standard cluster and you're getting full value for them? That happens, I, I, I don't, it's not before you, but it happens frequently, it happens all the time. In, in towns with larger subdivisions and larger condominiums. Very common for developers to take advantage of affordability, density bonuses, but only for some of their units. This isn't that. This is a, we're an organization that's committed to workforce housing. This is entirely workforce housing, this development. And all of these units, as you know from our submissions, are subject to price. Uh, affordability covenants. That keep the price at as target for, uh, to make them affordable.
There's thirty nine, two oh four. The minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet. They're allowed. Three units. They have a density bonus of another three units. This language, it seems like the board is leaning towards is that. The, the density bonus is not included at the inclusion of. Or the commencement of the calculation. So when you're talking about. This, we're talking about a, a division by three. When you're dividing. The lot size by three units and we're looking at the, the area. The area per unit, you know, you're at thirteen thousand and which is above the minimum lot size. So. Where is the, the open space? And if you're above that with that number of units, well, there, there isn't. But if they came out of the game, they had. Four units. You know, it would be different. It would kick us, it would kick us into a. A different net result, which would. It could actually require that.
But if they started with the four units, they would have had already been engaged in that. Some sort of extra density because the town didn't. You start the conversation by, by the property, the whole entire thing starts with the calculation of. You've got over thirty thousand square feet, not forty thousand. So we are allowed three units. That's the, that like calculation you're going back to. The whole calculation could never start. If there, if it wasn't, if there wasn't enough lot for those three units.
But it wasn't. You got a density bonus to get your other three in there.
Just, just to reconcile all of your positions. And it's possible you won't all universally agree. It's only necessary that a majority agree. So. What I'm going to do is take the chairman's statement as a formulation. And see if we can test it with the other members. What I hear Meredith saying is. If you, if you'd had four. Um, units that were not excluded as bonus units. You would have had to have more than thirty nine. Thousand square feet.
Right.
Agreed. But we gotta deal with the application elements that are before us and. We also have this challenge associated with this very. One component remade. A lot of this has already been decided. I don't want to go back and plow old ground of what if, what if, what if? I think you've got a very concrete question to be decided. And I think the chairman has formulated reasonably well his formulation. Um, I would suggest that you're probably not going to have a written decision to act on tonight. But I need to glean enough of what the majority position is on what the chairman said. So if you can.
I'm actually still trying to consider all the situations of.
But you don't have to consider all the different situations that may appear before you in the future for two reasons. One is the remand is focused on agreeing with your decision.
No, you're not. I'm just trying to sort out the, the options and how I see this because the, the calculation as being cluster workforce housing, this is not cluster. We don't, we don't have lots.
That's right.
So there's that whole factor. But then there's the factor of them saying that we're supposed to have a, a calcul- that the, the court has said, what is the calculation for open space?
But it's found even a calculation of zero to be eminently plausible.
But you still have to have a calculation.
That is a calculation. Zero is a calculation.
It's a result of a calculation. The calculation is saying.
So I said, first step is formulation. What is your formulation? What the language means? The chairman has given his formulation. It's okay to take a pass if you're not ready to say whether you agree or have a different formulation. I hear you.
I, I just want, I want to go us back to can you just let us have the conversation? Because this conversation over here was helping me think it through.
Okay.
And you're saying, stop having a conversation. I'm like, because I'm not ready to figure out what I, I hear what everybody's, but let us talk this through. We have not, you've thought about it, you've figured it out. We have not. We still need to be able to discuss it in a proper sense.
If this wasn't a workforce housing subdivision application, then I think we would have a different calculation. Uh, we would be starting with a different number. Uh, I mean, we would be, in a nutshell, we would be um, dividing by six and not.
Right.
So what I'm trying to get at is these incremental steps towards a formulation of calculation where it seems like there's a general consensus that we're, we're dividing six.
Yes.
You're adding the, the whole lot by three.
That we're coming out of the gate following the, in our process of formulating a formula here, we're talking about three units, not six.
As, as per five sixteen point three.
But you're saying you're dividing the thirty nine thousand by three.
Yeah.
I guess the way that I look at it now, you know, we're, we're thinking with three and I can see Attorney Plaguey going that since we're over ten thousand, you know, we're thirteen thousand sixty eight for each of those three, we're above the ten thousand minimum lot size. So we have extra property, thus we don't have to specify open space because there is open space already. There's not a lack of open space.
And that's what I was trying to put in context is like, look, even if we were to follow that pathway and we arrive at zero, we still, there, there is still something there. You know, we're, it's not, it's not technically zero, you know, it's, it's twenty thousand nine hundred square feet of.
If, if the thirteen thousand sixty eight was less than ten thousand, then we would be deficient and we would have to find dedicated open space, but because there is extra space, so called, we're above the ten thousand square feet, I can see how we do not have to
Mm hmm.
demand, ask for designated open space and which would put the open space requirement at zero.
And I think if this, again, if this wasn't a workforce housing development, we would probably, I would wager, we would be talking more about Mr. Burns' formula.
True.
I guess I feel like, isn't this what we decided? Like when we went through the application originally, I'm like, this is exactly the conclusion that we came to. And that's what, I'm like, that's it.
Yeah, so what we, we said, Meredith, was like, hey, this isn't a cluster subdivision. This is housing subdivision. What the court said was, okay, they're, they're not mutually exclusive. They're, they're of the same family and you guys got to figure.
A cluster, I think that, and I thought we had this conversation when we went through it, is cluster can be affordable, but affordable doesn't have to be clustered. And that we came to the conclusion of this is affordable, it's not clustered. But they wouldn't do cluster unless it was affordable.
That's for the.
But, but they've sent it back saying you have to come up with something. And I'm like, but it's not clustered. In fact, it's not clustered.
Under a cluster development that didn't have workforce um, covenants, affordability covenants, we would be entitled to six units because your lot size minimum for um, cluster subdivisions, five thousand square feet.
Hmm.
If we didn't have the affordability covenants, there would be no density bonus. It's just a different lot size calculation.
Hmm.
Um, we would have to preserve open space for everything, all every unit essentially every fifty thousand minus fifty nine thousand two hundred and four, whatever that number is, twenty thousand something. Right? We would have to provide that open space if it was just clustered. And so the law court says.
We're making it work with the cluster.
The law court says that here's, there are open space requirements for both.
Right.
But then it says that looking at the ordinance as a whole, the purpose of workforce housing is to allow denser development, i.e. with less open space. So that's from a law court decision on page seventeen. So it's different calculation from standard cluster calculation.
That's why we're starting with three instead of six.
The last time you said did not apply, the law court said, well, it does apply. You have to show the math to show where you get a number from. The number could be zero, which you know, in my world, for the different sentence, that means if there's no open space requirement, there's, right, you're not applying a number other than zero to that section. Zero is the number, sorry, right? Engineer.
Zero is.
Then basically we just have to show our work.
It's your work.
So I, I.
Well, that's where I fall off. I'm like, what work? Like it's not cluster, so it doesn't. And I'm like, well, this is what got remanded, so.
Emily just said the work, I think, you know, from, from the applicant's perspective.
It's important that a majority of the board state what you think the work is, um, but I think you're almost there. I'm, I, I'm not, I'm not pushing the board to get to any result. I'm just trying to use your time efficiently. And I think there's been variations on the theme. And I think all those variations add up to, gee, it sounds like where you are is this is true one hundred percent workforce housing. If it is, you don't apply the density bonus units, you only apply the three base units. So.
Now, we, we apply the three base units. You know, that's where, you know, I could see your thing, you know, it's supposedly it's not cluster, it's workforce. But if we use cluster, then that's five thousand square feet per unit and the same math works.
Yeah, I, I come back to something member Burke said just a few minutes ago, and that is this one's a little bit confusing because it's a developmental subdivision. It's not a raw land of lot subdivision. You only got a single lot and you're using a condominium's style of ownership, which means only the space within the exterior walls are owned by individuals. Everything else is owned in common.
Yes.
And so I think to, to go to your question, Number Kimberly, I, I think that because it's a true workforce housing unit, the signal in your, the plain text of your ordinance sends you to exclude the density bonus units and you're at three. And the question is if you've got ten thousand square feet per unit typically um, for workforce housing, um, per the subdivision ordinance and its correlative land use ordinance provision, then you take three times ten thousand, that gives you thirty thousand. And we've got a thirty nine thousand and change square foot lot. So therefore you're not reducing below what's required by the formula. So if you come to a majority perspective on that, and whatever way you'd like to, I'm not going to push you to get to any given result. I just think that that's the first step. And then the second step is even if you were to reverse the order, is there sufficient um commonly held open space that you would need it even if you reversed it? But the law court, for me, has given definite cues to this board. We would find eminently plausible the method that you described in various ways as a board already tonight. And they may well uphold you on that. Okay, but if you want to wear suspenders together with your belt, you could also go on and say, even if we were to do it the other way, we find that twenty thousand nine hundred square feet is greater than the ten thousand and change calculation that Attorney Burns provided.
So you would either, you know, it's so hard to train a thought with the, um, but the, if you were if you had a deficit based upon the, the number of units and the lot size when you were first calculating this and this wasn't a workforce housing development, then you would follow Mr. Burns' math. And, but that's not what we have here. We have a surplus, right, with three units. And it, and it is a workforce housing development. So we end up with a surplus because of that, the thirteen thousand square feet per unit and, you know, that's for three units, that's like nine thousand squ- nine thousand square foot surplus. So that doesn't kick us into the math that's spelled out in the first sentence of five sixteen two three. So we end up with a surplus and the minimum, above the minimum lot size. And then, you know, I think when you're looking at that then, then that's determining or aiming you at that there's, there's not an open space requirement here. That's, it's essentially zero as they spelled out. And what I was trying to say earlier is that the net result is, is it's technically not zero in the context of this project. I mean, there is green space allocated here and protected through the condominium bylaws.
Declaration.
Declaration.
Bylaws get changed easier by the association. That's why I'm making the distinction. Got it. One record of the other, not necessary. Can be.
I, I, it seems to me that we're now working through, well, I guess, uh, really just defining how this is said. But wh- when you said that, uh, if it wasn't done for affordable housing, it would still, there would still be space for six. Lot, there was a ten thousand, the zone has a, a ten thousand feet. The cluster housing would get it to five thousand, but the zone, which is representative, the, the wording of the minimum lot size required by the representative zone. So it, it would be from ten thousand square feet if you're calculating cluster housing. I personally like the concept that we say we don't, we calculate it as affordable housing and therefore not accounting those units and by that calculation, there is no shortage of lot. And so there is no requirement for open space.
Yes.
But if you calculate it for, with the cluster uh, subdivision requirement, then they're required to have the ten thousand blah, 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 square feet. And they have that because it's a condominium development and all of the open space counts towards that. Because it, it is defined in the condominium law and then you've got it from both, both arguments and both lawyers.
You do. So the the twenty thousand nine hundred square feet plays a different role based upon what the.
There's no role in the first.
There's no role.
And in the second role, you're saying, well, that's open, common, shared, open space preserved by the condominium law, open, shared space.
But I, but I, if it wasn't a workforce housing development, I would say that we would be following Mr. Burns' math instead of Mr. Plagie's math.
Or it is.
I would disagree because you're just doing village residential, one ten thousand square feet for three units. That's not cluster or workforce. That's just what the town allows you to be killed on. I think for me to do the town a cert- a good service, I said precedent, you say we might not need it, but I feel like you've got to calculate the court, as close to this ordinance as you can with your math. Following the math down. And it's quite, it's, it looks like their subdivision meets the requirement, but I just want to see more solid math.
You want to see math, but the math is for cluster.
Right. It's workforce housing, not workforce housing, calculated. When calculating open space, we're qualified workforce housing.
What you're looking.
I agree.
If it's cluster, it's, you'd be divided by six. If it's workforce, you'd be, you're dividing by three.
But what we, what we came to the conclusion of was that a cluster would be workforce housing, but workforce housing doesn't have to be clustered.
But the courts said, if, and again, it's some of the wording of a court decision I struggled with, but I, I understood the court told us like, they're not, they're not.
Exclusive.
Yeah, no.
Because cluster has to be workforce, but workforce.
They exist in the same sphere of influence and that we can't, we can't say, well, there's no open space because it's workforce housing.
Because the court said they clearly impose some open space requirement for workforce housing, that, our ordinance. They cited the number and they said it clearly imposes some open space requirement for workforce housing in the.
But it could be zero.
It could be zero. Exactly. Yes. According to which math we picked.
But aren't they coming up with that from the from five point twelve that says currently protected.
No, they cite five point one six in the.
Five point one, six point two.
So if you go to page seventeen under tab three, I think you'd find this helpful.
Second.
Sorry, which tab?
Uh, tab three.
Tab three. Page seventeen.
Page seventeen.
Got it.
And take the entire paragraph. Don't just take one sentence, take the entire paragraph. When we apply these principles to a reading of the text of section five sixteen two three, two points emerged, there is an open space requirement for workforce housing subdivisions. Underline that because the last time the decision issued, you found that there was no requirement for open space for workforce housing. They're disagreeing with you. But the second point is really important to the thing that you've been wrestling with Meredith, and that is they find that open space requirement differs from the requirement for cluster housing subdivision.
And it, and it differs by three or six.
Right. So they go on to say, as reflected in the discussion above regarding density limits and looking at the ordinance as a whole, the purpose of workforce housing is to allow denser development with less open space. Hence, six units are allowed on this lot as opposed to three. That said, section five point sixteen point two, three clearly imposes some, underline the word some, open space requirement for workforce housing. It expressly references open space requirement for workforce housing and explains how to calculate the open space required. So I'm, I've been doing math a long time. Zero is, zero is a math digit. Okay? You can say that you're going to have some open space requirement, then come to a calculation of zero. But again, this is counsel for the town, the planning board here. I wouldn't feel terrible if you did a belt and suspenders rationale. You first find that under five point sixteen two three, you do in fact exclude, as several numbers have said, you do in fact exclude
Why don't we have a motion on that?
There you go.
From the board.
Yeah, that's a good place to start.
Seems like that's. I would make a motion to I would make a motion to regard this as three units versus six because of the workforce housing. Blah, blah, blah. We phrase it. Yeah, according to five sixteen point two three. And the project being determined previously determined as by the board as being a workforce housing development that the formula for the open space requirement excludes the density bonus.
Hold on, hold on.
Therefore, the initial calculation is
Based on three.
Based on three units instead of six.
Can I ask, you excluded the density bonus, but I think you meant to say the density bonus units because you're not giving me a density bonus number. I've got one, but.
Yeah, the.
You're not excluding that.
No, we are excluding.
Excluding the three units.
We're excluding the three units allowed by the density bonus for that type of development.
Okay, we had exclude density bonus uh therefore. You are based on three units and so therefore it's based on three units instead of six. But you want the word unit. Interesting. It's a bonus unit.
Number.
Is that our motion? I can second.
Well, I just I would encourage us to do also what was suggested was that the the backup argument for the sake of the courts.
Yeah, we can add that to the motion.
I wouldn't.
No.
I'd do two separate motions. You're gonna have a hard time. You try to bring those two together at the moment, but it is an important second motion.
Yeah, I I just want to, I I see hole in in the argument and therefore I want to get kicked back to court and then just say, no, that's because I feel like we're basically doing the same argument that we did. I mean, it's slightly different, but we're coming up with the same argument that we did the first time and it got kicked back to us. So I'd like to back it up with the other argument so that we covered our bases.
However, if it was not workforce housing development, then the bonus density bonus would be included into the initial calculation and.
Uh saying that the the other calculation of it's it's got six units on a thirty nine thousand and that whole calculation down and then times it by only three. That that's the leaving out, that that's treating it under the cluster. And if the courts are saying there's no difference between cluster and workforce, then we make that calculation and say, and here is the designated space. So it's still under the even under cluster workforce housing definition. It's still is okay.
Should that be cluster slash workforce housing?
And it's the only thing that I can see is that they're saying we shouldn't have, that there shouldn't be separate, but they do recognize that there's a.
Let's get Heidi to mold the clay of this.
Yeah, so let's stick with the first, stick with the first motion.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know who motioned this, but regard this as this uh subdivision, maybe this regard this as three units versus six because of workforce housing according to uh section five point sixteen point two point three. Uh is that the loser or is that subdivision? And uh project, th- this is very. And then I think this is where we went with Bill and project previously determined. Oh, and the project was previously determined workforce.
Alan, not to diss your motion, but I think we could just swipe the beginning of your motion.
Sure, absolutely.
From the record.
I I wiped the beginning of that motion.
And we ju- we just need to say as determined previously by the.
I made a suggestion that I mean, I can't move as an alternate, but we maybe we start the motion with the conclusion that we're not under five point sixteen point two point three. The open space requirement. Or the open space requirement is zero based upon oh, the calculation.
Give. Tried that blah, blah, blah. Based upon, he doesn't like it.
On removing your three units from the calculation at the beginning, which is what you need. So based on move removing the bonus units, I'm helping you out here.
Like you start as at the result.
Start at the result and then into it, so.
Say that again, slowly.
Well, I remember it.
We calculate the open space requirement to be zero based on the.
Can I can I give you a hand based on what I'm hearing? So I think you're you're actually smart to start with a phrase according to five point sixteen point two from three. If you have workforce housing, and I think that's the important premise. You have a hundred percent workforce housing here. And you may want to actually say that if you if you have one hundred percent workforce housing, then that is the application. The initial calculation under five point sixteen point two from three is based on three units excluding three density bonus units. Therefore, it is based on the.
Some three units.
Yep, therefore it is based on three units and the calculation follows. Because I think you have to do the formulation first. The calculation is thirty nine thousand two hundred and four square feet divided by three gives you thirteen thousand sixty eight square feet.
You might say divided by three non-bonus units, so you're clarifying.
I I agree. We divided by three non bonus units, correct. That equals thirteen thousand sixty eight square feet. Period. Because thirteen thousand sixty eight square feet is greater than ten thousand square feet.
The minimum lot size requirement for VR one.
The minimum lot size requirement.
And what was the number?
Ten thousand square feet.
Based on.
Minute, yeah, the minimum lots cu- size requirement in the VR one zone.
Lot area.
In the VR one zone for lot area, agreed. The required open space equals zero in this application. Or for this application.
The required open space is zero based on this application. Is that what you said?
Equals zero for this application. I you could say for this workforce housing application. Because I agree with the comments I've heard from both Meredith and Ann, that if you had cluster housing and it wasn't workforce housing, it'd be totally different. And Heidi, you're much better at reviewing what you've got than any of us would be. So when you're ready to read back what you've got, that might help the board.
Uh according to section five sixteen two three, I'm going to say of the subdivision ordinance, if you don't mind.
Yes, that's correct.
If you have one hundred percent workforce housing, the initial calculation is based on three units. And the calculation is as follows.
Uh you should say based on three units, parenthetical excluding three density bonus units.
There was a piece I was missing.
That no, no worry.
Uh excluding three density.
Bonus units.
Okay, according to section five sixteen two three of the subdivision ordinance, if you have one hundred percent workforce housing. The initial calculation is based on three units excluding three density bonus units. And the calculation follows three thousand, thirty nine thousand two hundred and four square feet divided by oh, three non-bonus uni- units uh gives. It shouldn't it shouldn't be results in thirteen thousand.
Results in is better.
Um results in thirteen, hold on, I gotta write that in. In thirteen thousand sixty eight square feet. Because thirteen thousand sixty eight square feet is greater than ten thousand square feet based on minimum lot size requirements in the VR one zone for lot area. The required open space equals zero for this workforce housing application.
That's it.
That's Alan's motion.
Alan.
Love that, Alan.
Yeah, you nailed it.
I owe you a coffee.
All right, who's going to second?
Tracy Keller, I'll second.
Any any further discussion?
Do we need to set forth that in reality this has passive outdoor living space equivalent to twenty thousand nine hundred square feet?
That's motion two.
Yeah, that's motion.
Still to come.
Okay, no further discussion, so. I guess I'll call it by member, so um. All those in favor?
Ally, Ally Kimberly.
Meredith.
I, Meredith Kinda.
I, William Hanley.
I, Tracy Keller.
Nay, and don't.
All right, motion carries.
The direction of the map.
Number two, motion number two.
Now, if you turn to tab eight. Go to page three. You want me to try to craft a motion for the board to consider?
Yes, please.
So um if the first step in the calculation under section five point sixteen point two three A is to derive the total area for open space.
Okay.
I mean, shouldn't you say if this wasn't a workforce housing?
I think that is better. Um I accept the chair's suggestion. So if you if you read back what you've got so far, I think we.
The first step in the calculation under section five sixteen two three of the subdivision ordinance is to deter to derive total area for open space.
Yeah, so before you get is to der- derive total area for open space, just put in a parenthetical.
You're skipping that, just before you say that, I don't uh understand how it wouldn't be workforce housing. It's cluster workforce. It the calculation is for it to be work, cluster workforce housing. But still, to end up with six units on there, it has to be workforce. But this calculation involves it being workforce as well. Only got six units on there because it's workforce.
Uh let's see, that that's where.
It's saying cluster and workforce are all one, one thing, so now we're saying.
So the parameters of the remand based upon page seventeen as we read it together.
They're same but different.
They're same but different.
That's what I'm saying, but it's it's not that it's not work, uh saying.
You you and the chairman work that out, because that's the piece that.
You can't wouldn't have six, you can't say if this wasn't workforce because you wouldn't end up with six units on the lot.
This could just be a finding about how many square feet of preserved open space over there and.
Now, but you've got to have something that represents a comparative value.
Okay, it's it's the calculation saying the ar- area of each dwelling of the.
I can't, can we say something like if this wasn't an exclusively workforce housing?
That's where you should start. I think that's the promise that's the lead into this. So Heidi, go with what the chairman just said. So if you can say that slower, Bill, and then let's 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 talk about that.
I mean, should we say something even more specific that even if, given that this is an it is.
No, no, the way you said it the first time was better.
Given that this is exclusively a workforce housing.
No, not given that.
Can you explain what we're trying to do for the second one? Because I think I thought we were just now trying to show that they met the requirement of zero open space on what they've already.
No, this 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 is a way of saying if you don't at the outset exclude the bonus units. Which is Attorney Burns' premise on page three of his letter. He derives a value of ten thousand three hundred ninety eight square feet. And what Mr. Plagie's earlier point tonight was, even if you adopt ten thousand three hundred ninety eight square feet as a requirement. They meet it with twenty thousand nine hundred square feet.
We're essentially saying they're both right, but the it depends on what kind of development it is.
The last um didn't we just pass that they're using the calculation from Attorney Plagie and.
Yeah, so let's rather than saying if it were not workforce housing or any of that, let's just cut that out and say if you were to calculate this the other way, where we're dividing the whole lot by six units to uh that the that each unit needs ten thousand square feet. And what do we have per six units? Read in this calculation.
Those calculations.
Well, there's there's the calculation that comes up with the ten thousand three hundred and ninety eight square feet needed of open space, and we have that.
I mean, do we need motion two or do we talk about motion two relative to this, though?
We are talking about it relative to this. You you're coming up with this calculation that you need ten thousand five hundred.
Here's the way to start it. Based upon the end, the tag of the first motion that Mr. Kimberly made. We said it's 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 a calculation of zero. Start it this way, Heidi, maybe. If the calculation is not zero under five point sixteen point two three A comma.
Did you say five point two three A?
Excuse me, five point sixteen two three.
Okay.
And were a value of ten thousand three hundred ninety eight square feet, we can talk about later if we want to specify how that.
Can you give me that number one more time?
Ten thousand three hundred ninety eight square feet. The applicant meets and exceeds that requirement with twenty thousand nine hundred square feet of commonly of of common.
I'm sorry, can you give me that number again?
Twenty thousand nine hundred square feet of common passive outdoor recreation space.
As identified on the.
As identified on page eight of the July fourteen supplemental submission. We could say July fourteen, twenty twenty three.
As as identified on the, can you say that one more time?
As identified on the on page eight of the July eighteen, excuse me, July fourteen comma twenty twenty three supplemental submission of applicant.
And how about including also and also defined in the uh condominium? That defined and protected in the.
Yes, the word protected is the right word. I agree. Um so um the twenty thousand nine hundred square feet is um provided for in the condominium declaration as common open space.
Provided for and protected by?
Yes, better.
Common open, open comment.
Common open space.
Want the provided for and protected by?
It's got to be attached to the two words condominium declaration. It's gotta be attached to the two words condominium declaration.
Okay. Think I have it in the right place. All right, you ready? If the calculation is not zero under section five sixteen two, three of the subdivision ordinance and I can't read that word. Oh, was a value of ten thousand three hundred and ninety eight square feet, the applicant meets and exceeds. Meets and exceeds the requirement uh with twenty thousand nine hundred square feet of common passive outdoor recreation space. As identified on page eight of the seven fourteen twenty twenty three supplemental submission of the applicant. And defined and protected in the. I mean, we do have that provide uh. Defined and protected in the condom condominium declaration is common open space. So we do have the, that's what's.
Whose motion was that? Is that yours, Meredith?
Oh, yeah, that was mine.
I heard that is your motion.
I'll second that. Oh, Tracy, Tracy.
I second.
Uh, yes, we do.
We. Further discussion on that motion?
Not here.
Right, I'll call it again. By individual, all those in favor, Alan?
I, Alan Kimberly.
I, Meredith Trandoff.
I, William Hanley.
I, Tracy Keller.
I, and Dalton.
What I'd suggest is that the board give the opportunity for. The brilliant board secretary and counsel to finalize. Um, the draft decision um and get it to you. Uh, at an upcoming meeting coming soon.
No motions? Can we just do that?
We'll just do that.
We just do that.
Yeah.
Right now.
So no other motion necessary relative to remand, those two over it.
I I just think that the. Accountable for the parties argued well tonight and presented the board with a pretty clear understanding of how they see. Five point sixteen two, three, just thank them for. Um, their efforts tonight because I thought it was well argued.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Thank you, Mr. Plaguey.
More importantly, Brady, congratulations. Have fun.
Yes, yes. Thank, thank you, Dan. Um, and and so Mr. Chair, as as a point of clarification, so the the board just took two motions. As to uh what I. What I interpret as 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 findings. Um, but the board has not taken a final motion. As to the disposition of the application on remand pending the board's review of draft findings by your counsel. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's that's well stated, Attorney Burns. What what I think the board's gonna have to do is if they are. Final uh give final approval to the decision rationale that was asked for by the law court, then Attorney Burns is exactly right. Then the board will have to say. And on this basis, we again approve. The heel way. Subdivision application, but we've not done that yet. And I would hold that in advance until the rationale is really clear and universally agreed to.
And that's essentially how we did it with our. Former findings.
Exactly. Yep.
So so just just for the purposes of timing, then the this matter is still open. A file, a final decision has not been reached by the board. I just want to make sure that the.
We're not there yet. You agree?
Excellent. All right, well, I uh Attorney Hamilton, do you have a a sense of the timeline for when a a written uh a draft written decision might issue?
Um, Thanksgiving is next week. It won't be next week. Um, and I'd look to you, Heidi, would we have a chance to talk in the first or second week of December?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah.
Then I'd say what's what's the board schedule um usually? Cause it. I think it worked well to have this outside of the regular schedule. So do you want to set a special board meeting sometime in December? I think you can count on the fact that I by the by the end of the first week in December, we should have.
I can get this done before the end of the.
When's the first hearing in December?
December tenth, but that app that's packed.
That's packed. Don't touch that. Yeah, so you need to set, you need to set a meeting date.
To be December? Well.
It'd be nice so everybody can move forward. The sooner the better. The tenth is on Wednesday and the seventeenth is the next Wednesday.
It's gonna be shortened quick though, right?
You can do it on a Wednesday.
Day, Sunday.
Do it one day.
I have a meeting.
Yeah, the the final uh operative motion is not gonna take long. It's it's just gonna be. Giving you prior opportunity to review and then add a meeting.
The third or the seventeenth of Wednesday's more. Being considered.
I can't do it the seventeenth. I can do it the third. And you you couldn't do it on the tenth if it's a fifteen minute item. Okay.
We have a contentious application on that. That's a public hearing. Had to see if the room's available. So what state are you looking at?
The third, the third of December.
Can't do the third, but Daniel can take my place. What what day of the week is that?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Okay.
Yep.
And we can take it. We have alternatives.
I will be.
Well.
That's that's not only gracious, number Dalton, that's appropriate. That's why you have an alternative.
In any other. We have. Gracious thoughts.
So I'm gonna. Come back to you, Heidi, and just say. If we can get it done by the end of the month, that would be great because I've got another Hancock. Planning another Hancock County planning board meeting, not in Hancock.
Oh, good.
Yeah, on December, on December two. So if we can, if if we can have the decision hammered out a week before, that's probably good.
I will, I'll start tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I'll I'll be in touch.
That means.
I know. Are you working on certain the the loser house? It's not such a small mess.
That sounds like. Would that be six o'clock on the third?
Time, it's already burned.
Brady Kim stepped out to check the room availability.
He's coming right back.
We're doing all Zoom.
Now, we were only doing the like votes where we all follow our own needs because of.
Yeah, good practice, though. I like it. Then you don't have any question as to how each member's voted, but you're right. It it arose out of a COVID period.
Yeah, I didn't. I thought that was something we could. We started that in COVID. Right, but I thought because we're not on Zoom anymore.
I didn't.
We're still following.
I think it's the best practice, actually. I've seen other boards do it um even before uh COVID and certainly following COVID. So. You know exactly how someone's voted. You don't have to try to remember. How that person vote.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, like if like if you're you're not required to to do it. You're absolutely right about that, Meredith. I just think it's the best practice.
Yeah.
But it's totally up to you.
I could have seen appeals boards too, yeah, and I thought it was just cleaner and especially when there's like.
So the twenty sixth of November is a week prior to December three.
December third works for this role.
Okay. That's what I have to do. We'll have to, we'll have to get a draft done. The board's review by the twenty sixth. Day before Thanksgiving. Yep, we can do that.
Okay, here we go.
Need a motion bill?
Yeah.
Like make a motion to adjourn?
Are we adjourning or are we moving it to a date certain?
Oh.
No, you gotta move to date certain.
Yeah, there you go, Alan.
Alan just moved to move it to December third, six P M. Gracie, so. All those in favor?
I.
And I opposed. There you go.
Thank you to the board for your work tonight.
Yeah, thank you, board members.
Thank you all.
Thanks, dude.
Thanks, Attorney Burn.
Enjoy, Grady.
Just did.
A date certain.